I'd like the area of farming technologies to join us here. Representation, speaker, you've got the floor, you've got a couple of chairs there. Like a short introduction for the record, and then it's all yours.
Thank you Chairman. I'm Hillary Tompkins and I'm outside legal counsel for Airloom. I'm a member of the Navajo Nation. Please, real pleasure to be here with all of you. I'm issued according to my conditions, Yatse. And that's what I said is I'm, my mother's side is Salt Plan and my father's side is Taos Pueblo. And I come from Navajo country, Ramon, New Mexico. It's a real honor to be here with all of you. I have a history with the Osage Nation when I was serving as Solicitor of the Department of the Interior under President Obama. I had the privilege of working with all of you on your historic tribal trust settlement case. And being settled that case, that's one of the highlights of my times serving at the Department of the Interior. And then I'm really touched to come here today and then see the photo on the wall commemorating that historic settlement which was done in 2011 where the United States and the Osage Nation came to reach peace. And the United States was helped to account for the missing degree of their trespasses in resources. I do look a little bit younger on that photo, but I'll get over that eventually. So I'm here today after serving at the Department of the Interior. I left government service and I'm now a partner at Hogan Levels, which is a global law firm based and founded in Washington DC. Can I work on tribal affairs, natural resources law, and also energy law? With me today is my colleague Jenny Stallings. Can I ask for Jenny to please introduce herself?
Thank you Hillary. Good morning. My name is Jenny Stallings. I'm the daughter of Marcy and Mark Hendricks. They grew up in Pascua. And now I'm an associate with Hillary at Hogan Levels. It's great to be home and I thank you all for the opportunity to be here with you today.
Thank you Jenny. Really proud to be working with Jenny and seeing the next generations of Native Warriors continue in that tradition of leadership and education. So with me today, I also have representatives from Airloom Carbon Capture Company. So I would love to turn it to you two to introduce yourself and then I'll make some stage setting remarks.
No problem. Please. Thank you Chairman. Thank you council members for having us. I am Mac Shulton. I am the first employee and head of commercialization at Airloom. I grew up in Boulder, Colorado. I live in San Francisco, California. Now, this is my very first time in, enjoying all of you. This is my very first time in Oklahoma and Pascua. Really appreciate you having us. I am very much looking forward to sharing what we are working on and locally developing partnership for the whole. Thank you all for having us.
Hi Chair. Hi Council. My name is Vikram Iyer. I'm the head of public policy for Airloom. Mr. Chairman, I wanted to just reflect on how you started today's meeting by acknowledging the history within these walls, both on them and in the room. I am the son of Indian American immigrants who immigrated to this country back in the eighties. And it's not lost on me how rich legacy and storytelling and heritage needs to be in my own family journey. So I'm looking forward to learning about your own as we engage with you all today. By way of background, I used to work in the Obama administration out in DC and also worked at a civil rights organization, the ACOU. And since then, I've been helping different technology companies navigate their policy challenges in the climate space. So very good to be with you. And I'll run it back over to Hillary.
Thank you. So today, we want to present to you the concept of a project that we are exploring, pursuing here in Oklahoma. And one of the foundational principles I have in my practice is to partner with companies that are committed to looking to Indian country for the development of these new technologies and projects in the energy space. And Airloom is that company. They're committed, they said, we want to go to Osage in Oklahoma first and foremost. This is our first visit with a government entity in this state. We want to tell you about our project, explore whether there's an interest in looking further at this project, but also learn from you about your land, about your interests, your priorities, your sovereign nation, you have fiduciary duties to your headright holders, you have a responsibility to manage the mineral interests. And we respect that role and we'll learn more about that role and see what you're thinking about in terms of your energy portfolio and seeing if there's any commonalities there. So we're going to present a short presentation on what the project concept is and a bit about Airloom. And we welcome questions during the presentation, Chairman, however you want to conduct questions. We're here to answer those questions as well. So I'll turn it over to Mac.
Thank you. So Hillary just mentioned this sort of concept for a project. I'd love to just start off describing a little bit about what it is that we do, what the technology is. I'll describe the concept and then give a brief background on the company and who we are as well. But, you know, many of you may be familiar with carbon capture, carbon capture at point source for, especially for power production, where CO2 is captured at the point of production and stored. We do something similar, but different. We do carbon removal. And very specifically, we are taking carbon dioxide that is already in the air to help industries that don't have a solution like carbon capture. So for aviation, for shipping, for cement, for steel, it's more difficult to capture CO2 at the point. And so, once it's released into the atmosphere, we can then grab it to restore balance to the atmosphere. So that is what the technology is. That is what we are doing. The concept for this project, you know, we are in relatively rapid scale up mode. We are looking to develop roughly a million ton per year facility. We capture a million tons of CO2 from the air every single year, up to three million tons. It's a multi-billion dollar investment, a hundred plus full-time jobs, thousands of construction jobs, a material project that we're talking about here. And let me walk through a little bit sort of what the technology looks like and how it works. Okay. So what we do is a technology called direct air capture. You know the next slide. And basically, we are combining an engineered approach with nature. And we're taking what nature gives us, this amazing benefit where CO2 binds to rock and it mineralizes. It becomes a stone and permanently removes CO2 from the atmosphere. So we're combining these two technologies to produce one that is a couple of things. One, it permanently removes CO2 from the atmosphere. It is highly measurable. It is regulated at the federal level, at the state level, in California, in Washington. It's a very small land footprint. We're talking about roughly a hundred acre facility for a million tons per year. And we use limestone, which is a very, very inexpensive natural material and it's naturally The team is about 150 people. We're based out of California. We are technologists, we are academics, we are policy books like Vikram. We've come from a number of different industries, from energy, from technology, from aviation, from automotive. And we're coming together to figure out how we build a highly scalable water cost solution. And so, basically, the way this works is we're using limestone. Limestone naturally binds to CO2. It naturally stores CO2. The chemical composition of limestone is CACO3. It's CO2 plus CAO. And really, what we're doing is we're using it as a sponge. We're using it as a sponge to repeatedly grab CO2 from the air. Next slide here. And the process is, I will go through here in detail, but we are basically looping limestone through the process. Taking limestone, removing the CO2, using it as a sponge to capture more CO2, and repeating that over and over again. Amazing. Thank you. And repeating that process over and over again. Once we take that CO2, it's a gaseous CO2. We can store it. Right now, in California, we're storing that in concrete, can be stored underground in injection wells also, where it permanently stays. Taking it from the atmosphere and storing it permanently. We built and are operating the first commercial facility. This actually is an image of our facility in California, just to give you a sense of what this looks like. These are limestone rocks sitting on trays exposed to the air repeatedly pulling up CO2. Again, operational facility in California. Our customers are buying carbon credits from us. We take CO2 out of the air and put it underground and companies like Microsoft and Meta and JP Morgan, large organizations that need to manage the emissions associated with the industries that act share, cement, steel, aviation, et cetera. I'll let Vikram speak to our project site first, which is a direct air capture fund funded by the Department of Energy.
Yeah, I want to, I know some of this science might be, you know, new to digest in real time, but I just want to name here what is historic about our step score in very recent few years. The first is, because we are operating the first fully commercial facility at 1,000 tons per year, we have just been funded to create two new projects in the state of Louisiana that would achieve massive scale. One will be 20 times the California facility in the Gulf Coast, pulling down about 17,000 tons of CO2 per year. And then the third, which we received money from the US Department of Energy, up to $600 million for, will pull down about 100,000 tons of CO2 per year. The reason we are able to go from the West Coast to the Gulf Coast so swiftly, and the reason we're able to go from lab scale to commercial scale so swiftly, is the simple elegance of that science that Mac laid out. We are using rocks. We are heating those rocks to then bind to CO2. We can capture that CO2, create jobs, and drive significant investment. So right now, not only are we the first fully commercial facility to do this, we know it's safe, we know it works, we're also the first megaton facility to be invested in, in the federal government. And so, as we've gone from facilities one to two and three, which we'll start turning dirt for in 2026 for the second facility in Louisiana, and then we'll start turning dirt in, or sorry, we will be online in 2026 for the second facility in Louisiana, and we'll be online for the third facility by 2027. We really, really, really want to start conversations with this council now to explore where we might be able to build our future facilities, the one in the enormity that Mac laid out. And that's important to us because when we think about how we build these facilities, we will, actually, I'll just pause here. You can take a look at the rendering on the screen as to what this facility looks like at a significant scale. This is an artist rendering of the one in Louisiana. And what we're considering here in Oklahoma would be larger than this, but a similar look and feel.
Chair. Yes, thank you. You said that you trapped the CO2 in concrete, then you use the concrete for structures, I guess, and I saw something about maybe sidewalks. What, where else would you store this limestone, the CO2?
So the CO2 binds to limestone and then we reproduce gaseous CO2. And then that CO2?
You say that again.
So the CO2 from the atmosphere binds to the limestone. We don't actually store the limestone. So then we heat up that limestone to produce a gaseous CO2, which is a pure stream of CO2. That's what's injected into concrete, or it can be injected underground into plastic storage.
So it goes back to gaseous state?
Exactly.
So the purpose of that is, so you'd be, so that you could take it in one area and transport it instead of using a pipeline?
So, so one of the, one of the great benefits of this technology is we can, we can basically site it anywhere. And so, we ideally want to site it as close to the end store, the storage site of that CO2 as possible. So yes, that CO2 can go into a pipeline, can go directly underground, it can be injected into concrete as well. So the best way to think about it is, there are CO2 molecules in the air. We are concentrating those CO2 molecules. We build a technology that grabs them from the air like a sponge, and then we take them and we can take those CO2 molecules, we can, you know, inject that underground, we can bind them into concrete as well.
And so, you're here approaching us at our location, you said, you have your eye on their mineral state. Why is that? Why here?
So, yeah, fantastic question. So there's, there's a number of different things that we look for ideally for this technology. I think the first, the first comment I'll make is, you know, we are, we aim to scale this technology quite significantly.
To what?
We aim, we aim to build this at a very, at a large scale, right? We want to, we want to grow this, this industry substantially. One of the things that's fantastic about this area are a couple of things that we look for. One is, we need energy, electricity specifically, to power the kiln base of our process. This area represents a diverse set of energy and is an essential component to our process. Two is, we like relatively, relatively high humidity, something that this area offers as well, and then, and then a place to store that CO2.
What, where would that be?
So in a, in classic storage, in underground injection block.
Like a class six well?
Exactly.
We don't have any class six wells. Is there something about our limestone here that's better than some of the other areas limestone? What? Is there something you're not telling us?
There's nothing we're not telling you. The limestone, so the limestone we use is commodity grade limestone. So it is, the process is slightly specific to the type of limestone we use. We have not tested any limestone from Oklahoma, but the limestone we use is very typical of the limestone that's used in agriculture or cement production, you know, in commodity block for, using commodity grade limestone.
If I may, council member, there is no attempt to hoodwink or hide the ball on anything here. Quite simply, we, quite simply, we have committed to three facilities across the United States. We are looking to where to build our fourth. Oklahoma, and particularly in this region, is a very attractive site for us, not only for the reasons Mac mentioned, but maybe, let me mention two more. First, it's not lost on us that to do this, strong partnerships with the workforce and the talent that can get this done is really, really important to us. And given this, this council's history and this state's history, working with energy majors, there's an opportunity for those who are very talented with geologics expertise, chemical expertise, to take things out of the ground. They're going to be quite talented and we can learn a lot from them about putting it back in. That's number one.
What percentage of your carbon capture, the carbon that you're capturing, what percent of that that you would leave in cement block form? And what percent would you want to inject into a classic well?
Yeah, so let me clarify that. I think that it might be some confusion on our part. I apologize. What we demonstrated out there by storing it in concrete was an example of how we can store it at small scales. And we've done that in California in concrete. And we poured that concrete, as you saw, back into sidewalks.
With Caltrain?
With the city of San Jose.
Yeah, it's under Caltrain.
That's under Caltrain, yeah. Regional infrastructure project. What we are envisioning here is exactly what we are doing in Louisiana, which is not storing that in concrete. Concrete can't trap the volume of CO2 we're talking about at these scales. Instead, what we're thinking about is a class six well injection. And I wanted to mention another point that might answer your question. You're right, this region doesn't have any classics permits yet, but there are, there is a filing for a classics permit, which is--
Which is being filed.
Yeah, that is correct.
You're aware of that?
We are aware. And so, the point of this meeting is simply to ask you how to engage in this process. As Hillary said, we are not talking to any other entity, any other government, until we're able to educate you on what we're thinking about. And we're also just interested in knowing how to do this correctly and how to do this by you. That's all we wanted to do today. Not necessarily hide the ball on anything, but let you know we're thinking about bringing this kind of tech to this region.
Thank you Jim. Yes, Councilmember. Thank you.
I'm real curious. Will you all be collecting the CO2 outside of Oklahoma Osage County and actually bringing it here to Osage County, finally calling this destination? Would you put somewhere in the concretes, whatever? I mean, are you going to be bringing it someplace else, from someplace else?
So the event is, would be to build the facility here--
Yes.
--to capture the CO2 from the air here, and then to store that CO2 here.
We have enough of that here to do that?
It's, it comes directly from the air. And CO2 is, it's called a well mixed gas. The CO2 concentration here is the same as the CO2 concentration in California, in Zealand, in Europe, et cetera. So there's enough CO2 in the atmosphere to build the facility here and repeatedly capture CO2 from here.
Yeah, so the facility--
Ultimately, you're going to be trying to be putting it in the RBO.
Can you say that one more time? Sorry.
Ultimately, are you wanting to store the CO2 in the RBO?
Five six.
In classics?
Yes.
Yes. That's right.
Second chairman here. I don't understand what you're getting at. Where you want to locate this facility in Osage County?
You know, we are truly at the concept phase here. And our goal is genuinely to come here and sort of share what a project might look like. We have no specific, we do not have specific site in mind.
Well, if you want a lot of electricity, OGND has a power plant over by the city. And actually, they're over here in Tulsa, you know. Pretty close to Tulsa, pretty close to Tulsa City. If you want that kind of electricity, OGND on that side, and BSO on this side.
Okay.
Just a reminder. That we have a storage unit that will possibly hold three billion. That's sealed right there.
Okay.
Yes. I'd like to introduce Mr. Raleigh Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one more of these kind of sciencey questions. If you capture all of the CO2 here, does more CO2 come in? What happens to the CO2 volumes in the area? Will the, will the plants not have the CO2 they need? I mean, just what happens? What are we talking about?
Yeah, so, it's a great question. So there effectively, the CO2, so if you, actually, if you look at this image, the sort of longer building is where the capture actually happens. Within that building, CO2 concentrations will decrease as it binds to limestone. Outside of that building, the CO2 concentrations will not change. There will be no measurable change to the CO2 around the building. Within a couple of feet, it returns to sort of atmospheric conditions. So no impact on, you know, on plant life, no impact on human health.
It was about the US.
Yeah, no impact on human health either. It's an incredibly, incredibly safe process, you know, all non-toxic materials, limestone, water, concrete and steel. It's, it's, yeah.
Where is this going?
This is Louisiana. So this is in northwest Louisiana, near, in Caddo Parish.
Yeah, Fort Creves, yes. Is there a classics well on the location?
There's a classics well offsite from this location. So the CO2 will be transported by pipeline to storage.
Has it been permitted?
It is in permit. It is in the permit phase. The permit has been submitted, but it has not been received yet.
And that process takes about how long?
So this is in Louisiana, which has privacy. The total process should take about 18 months from start to finish. Yeah, 18 to 24 months is the projected time.
For an EPA permit approval?
It's, it's permitted through the Louisiana Department of Energy and Natural Resources.
The, you're storing this in co space. What is the state of Louisiana's position on co space ocean?
So in Louisiana, the, you know, I'm not a legal expert, but my understanding, and actually, let me, let me share this as well. So we build the capture technology. And at our fence line, we pass off the CO2 for transport and storage. And so, we do not do the transport and storage ourselves. We do not permit the classics permits ourselves. We just build the capture technology. So my understanding here is limited, but from what I understand in Louisiana, the surface rights owner is the co space owner. And so, CO2 injected, CO2 injected at the, at that site, the, you know, the surface rights have to owe the entire community enough for that process. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense.
Well, it sounds good, you know, who knows? And then before we ever did business with anybody, we have to worry about the Bureau of Energy Affairs, whether or not, how we lease it, and how this money is going to get to our tenants.
Yes.
You know, bottom line. But we're talking about, okay. And we need to know just how the DIA would approve it, if they would approve it. You know, this is an all new frontier. And I guess we're going to have to go to Washington and sit down with them and see just how they think about this. You know, they don't like to change their rules with the 25 cent laws, we don't like that, listen for the worst. Okay, so, you know, I appreciate you coming today. I really do. It sounds like a money-making deal for somebody, but I haven't seen where it's going to make us all that much money yet. I need that approved, too.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think it's a very good set of points, just three things I wanted to say to that. First, I just want to re-clarify, because I know a lot has been said. I'm sorry for talking at you in any way, but just clarify the numbers that we're talking about here. This facility will be the largest carbon removal facility on the planet. About 100,000, at least 100,000 construction jobs in the region, more than, more than 100 permanent jobs in the region. These are all paying jobs, paying prevailing wage, offering benefits. That's sort of factoid number one. Council member, number two, to your question, you know, on this slide, we have some features as to who we are. The most important thing I want to leave you with is, we know this technology works and it's safe and it's to the benefit of the climate, but we also want to make sure that when we think about this, we're not just talking about capital investment and jobs. We want to talk about how to make sure that this is a good bet for the minerals council from a revenue perspective. And that part, we're open-ended on. This is the beginning, we hope, of a conversation. To your point, council member, there is no classics permit yet, so we're still kind of shopping around and looking around. But we wanted to make sure that if we were to come here, that there is a meaningful economic benefit to this council and to this region. How we structure that, whether it's, you know, in an equity format, revenue sharing format--
All of the above.
--all of the in love is something that we would love to explore with you. And that is why we think that this is an intriguing bet. This is not just to our benefit, but certainly this region's benefit. And the last thing I'll say is, because we have the imprimatur of the US Department of Energy, we are very close to members of this administration's cabinet when it comes to the EPA, when it comes to the Department of the Interior, and when it comes to the Department of Energy. So you're right, we haven't had the DIA conversation yet. We wanted to start here first. But we would be very interested in exploring what their thoughts are since their own counterparts at the Energy Department are investigating.
You did say something, the administration, this administration, you know, we never even had a question in November. You know, I don't know how that's going to change things. I really don't. None of them did. So, you know, I might have some input from the Bureau of Energy Affairs from Washington DC. That's what I want, to see how they, how well that they're receptive to this.
Thank you Chairman. So you mentioned revenue potential in job creation, which is understandable and would probably need to be significant. But one thing that's not been mentioned and needs to be, is that, that we represent, we represent the headright owners who elected us, we're elected officials by them, and a lot of them live here on our mineral state. And there are some that are concerned about the whole concept of storing carbon in a class six well. So it's not just revenue driven. There's also a concern about the potential risk to health and environment, these sort of things. This is so new to us, anyway. I know carbon capture, its equestration's been around for decades, but not here and not on our-- I know carbon capture, its sequestration's been around for decades, but not here and not on our mineral reservation. Some of the issues that we're concerned about is how, besides the safety, another, another primary concern is the, the, how it might hinder the development of our minerals. Access to oil and gas reservoirs. The plume that you mentioned could be a pretty sizable area, radius. Do you have any estimate of, you were talking a million tons per year, up to 3 million tons. What makes, how large of a circumference would you anticipate plume being for 3 million tons per year injection rate?
So, great question, I don't have the answer to that today. We can definitely, my understanding is it will depend on the specific geology of the site, but, you know, it's a very valid question and one we should follow up on.
It'd be many square miles.
You know, I can't, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Okay, you, you're familiar with Louisiana, you're already in the process of permitting a classics well or somebody else is, and you'll be you on it. How big is their plume?
Yeah, so, you know, yeah, I'll have to look it up, I don't know off the top of my head, we're, you know, we are, again, not responsible for that permit, but that's, that's an answer I can give you.
Because I'm sure that you're considering, maybe this is another department within your organization that would be more technical, inclined to answer, but the preferred zone here is the Arbock Line for several reasons. And we have, it's one of our best-producing oil and gas zones. It's also the most favorable zone for us to store saltwater in, using our core space, of course, to put the saltwater in. That's really, but sometimes a saltwater disposal well is more valuable than producing well. Because without a saltwater disposal wells, we can't produce hardly any of our production. Almost, with very little exception, our production is associated with the saltwater. But just in addition to the job creation, the revenue potential, which I'm sure because of the numbers, they're exciting numbers. I know they're, they're big numbers. But we also have to consider if this is something we'd even want on our mineral estate in the form of a sidewalk or building construction with the cement, which you said these volumes, you know, is too large for, for that type of storage. But anyway, the safety and health of the, of our citizens. So anyway, just wanted to, I think that you're.
Council, do you have any questions? I'd just like to entertain another issue, yes, all of those are items which we talked about, but also we own the limestone on behalf of our headright owners. The situation that the council's talking about is what the nation's going to come up with, with our council on the legislation which actually protects us from this environment if we're not approving it. Third is that we're not going to give up the state of Oklahoma, nothing. And that's where we're going to sit now, legislation, I'm going to look over here and tell them it's due yesterday, but we've got to have this information to include that. We're getting ready for a new CFR code to roll out that has nothing involved in, with this. So I don't see how we can take a document, but that's shortcoming. The last comment comes is that when we go into this, the state of Oklahoma knows we're the last real reservation left. So they're spending a lot of time, and I know the next one who's going to run for governor is going to spend a lot of time on seeing our demise. With that being said, I, I appreciate the councils, I'm going to turn it back over to Councilman Revor, but that's where we're at as a council. But we will look at anything that you have, the DOE, I'm going to be looking at desultation. Once we can get past the Supreme Court, if things on our plate as a council, we're looking at exactly that. And the environment is a consideration. We've had to go through hard times on this, and my shareholders, since I am one, I know exactly how hard it's been. This is probably a commodity which we've got to make as a council, whether we go into carbon capture, whether we go into the other parts of it, or we don't. But the production element, EOR, is the brightest thing I think that we have facing us, it could be a possibility, Councilman.
Thank you, Chairman. Just like to have an idea, on a 3 million ton per year injection rate, how much limestone would you utilize for that process? And what, how, what kind of grade of limestone? You know, we have, you may not know this, but we have rock quarries here on our mineral estate. In, from one side of our mineral estate to the other at different grades of quality.
Yes.
Some for raw materials, you know, it's just, it's, it differs from one side of the county to the other, in, in the grade.
Yeah.
So is the quali, is the grade for this type of operation, is it require the highest grade of limestone? And if so, where is your source for the limestone? And do you have any idea if our quarries would be a source for the limestone? What kind of volume are we talking about? And is it something too that, I'm just picturing, from my experience in, in oil and gas production, we have unwanted H2S in our, in, associated with our saltwater production and it comes out of our gas field. Well, you can run it through a vessel and filled with certain materials that will absorb that H2S and, and absorb enough of it that the discharge is suitable of good enough quality to get into a market and get in a pipeline. Then you have these chips that are removed once they get saturated with H2S. And, and it may just not be the chips, it may be some chemical added with the chips, so I don't know the, the details of that vessel, but I'm just saying. So there's a certain amount that has to go in there and that at some point it needs to be extracted, new, fresh material put in.
Yeah.
Is that the same with the limestone, that it could finally absorb to a saturation point? And then at that point, you need to move it, put in some new? And then would you move it off location or just to another? Is your equipment such that it's one thing for you to capture it into the limestone? Then you're going to remove it and put it into another process to actually turn it back into gas? Is that all in the same facility or is that transported somewhere else in there?
So a couple of different, a couple of different answers to that. So just in terms of the scale of limestone, how much limestone do we need on an annual basis? It's in the range of tens of thousands of tons per year. And we take that limestone and we repeatedly process it at the same, at the same facility. So it is looped through our facility many, many times, going back and forth between limestone and calcium oxide, limestone and calcium oxide. It, it, it can degrade over time, over about 100 cycles. So we cycle it through the process many, many, many times. At the end of its life.
So you're using the same limestone to capture it, then to have it extracted from it? And then you take that same limestone, use it again, and you say you can do that about 100 times?
Exactly, that's exactly right. So unlike, unlike H2, H2S processing, the limestone is going back and forth between its sort of limestone chemical and calcium oxide. At, at the end of its life, while it is, while it may no longer be suitable to capture CO2 efficiently from the air, it is still suitable for all sorts of other industrial uses. So it can be used as agricultural lime, it can be used in water treatment, it can be used in actually some forms of concrete production as well. So the end of life of that material is feedstock for, for other industrial processes. So it didn't, it wouldn't have to go to a waste facility. Exactly, it doesn't go to a waste facility. And, and the question about the, the sort of the grade of the limestone, does it need to be the highest grade or the, you know, does, does that matter? The grade, the, the actual grade we use is called commodity grade limestone. And so that is not very high quality, not the lowest quality, it's something similar in the middle.
Is there any other discharge from this plant, whether it be gases or water? If so, what kind of disposal would be necessary for that discharge? I've heard, also with discharge, I've heard associated with this technology might be some, you know, micron-sized dust particles that might be emitted. Is that, is that true? How do you remedy that, how do you capture the dust?
Yes, yep, great questions. So do we have any waste product? The only waste product we have is, is water from reverse osmosis. So there's a small amount of, of water disposal that we do need to deal. Other waste, otherwise our, truly our inputs are electricity, water, the air, the CO2 from the air, limestone. There's, there's nothing else involved in this process. The, I'm sorry, remind me of the, the dust. So you want to speak to, to California?
Yeah, yeah, I think this is a really important question, council member, and it links back to your earlier question on safety. So you, you can ignore the entirety of this slide, but the third bullet says, safe. We have inputs and third-party verifications about the safety of our technology and we would not build in any community unless we were sharing that data with you all to review as yourselves, not just trust a corporation for it. So number one, the particulate matter release from this limestone process that we're describing is actually 16, a third-party verifier found that it was 16 times less than the standard OSHA reporting requirement threshold. So it's quite divinous and that sort of dust release is not creating any air quality impacts or any water quality impacts as we've seen in our facilities to date. But number two, I think what you mentioned is a really good point. You mentioned that safety on the storage conversation. I think that as Max mentioned, while we are not the storage person ourselves, we do feel we have a responsibility to communicate that and invest in that. And the biggest amount of data out there right now is, you know, you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, enhanced oil recovery. The last three or four decades, as EOR has scaled, the science and verification of being able to use CO2 to pump underground and then pull up oil has been hugely validated in terms of the safety of those, those well-based facilities to contain and keep CO2 that gets pumped back in safely there. So there's about 40 years' worth of peer-reviewed data and science on this. I think that we all have an obligation, whether it's our California facility, Louisiana facility, or potentially here facility, to make sure that we're educating the public on that safety and that we continue to do so in a responsible way. But the standards the EPA has set to make sure that these are tightly constructed before any permit is given is very high. The last thing I want to say and then I'll stop rambling is that to your point about the impact on the oil and gas industry and just space, you're right to look at the sizing and the space landscape, I'll get that information back to you. But it is 100% our goal here to not take away from or replace or supplant energy majors. It is our goal here to augment those industries with this new frontier of carbon management.
I have one final question. Yes, I have one final question. So it may be two questions. There'll be three. So if we were to work with you, would you all be permitting and owning and operating the classics well? And if not, who do you, have somebody in mind that you might disclose to us at this time, who that would be?
So we, we are unlikely to, at least for the time being, we are unlikely to do that ourselves. Our core competency is building this, the capture technology itself. You know, we have less experience on, you know, gas transport and, and storage. And so, you know, from, from our perspective, maybe that is something we will do eventually, but unlikely for the, sort of the immediate future. And we've been in discussions with, with capture points. We are aware of, you know, other developers that, that may be interested in, in developing plastics storage as well. But again, our, you know, our intent here is, is really to introduce ourselves and, and make sure that this, you all see what we are trying to build. But yeah.
But I was just trying to get at, you know, who your playmate is.
Yes. Yeah, we, you know, we have had discussions with, with Captain specifically.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Councilwoman.
Well, that was my question, since you did say that you all weren't going to be in the part of the storage facility. Who did that be? He just answered that, he asked my question.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so you actually just capture it and you're going to take it to capture point, did you say? And they're going to store it, isn't that correct?
Yeah.
In their classics well.
Yeah.
I see. I'm not sure, I mean, you said it so smooth.
You got it, you got it. And, and council member, the only thing I'll add to that is it's our understanding that they're one of the lone, if not the lone permit applications that's been filed for the classics permit. I think to Max's point, since we're very much still in discovery phase, if there are other players out there, you know, we'll certainly consider those conversations. But as of right now, the opportunity to potentially partner with the Minerals Council to do this is really exciting for us, which is why we're sort of zooming in on, on that specific location.
Yes, so what, what would be your timing? What's your projected date if we were to want to work with you on your, the implementation of your equipment? What, what, what date in year are you talking about, maybe as a target date?
Yeah, so the target date would be at earliest the end of 2028, 2029, 2030, pressures off.
Okay.
No, that would be the target date for, you know, the, the start of production. So, yeah.
But the classics wells, I think, take about six years to get permitted and another six years to get authorization to inject, if I'm not mistaken. So I guess you would fall ahead of probably an actual authorization to inject, you're only talking in the 2028 maybe, I don't know. Maybe I'd be closer. But you're here today, are you here today to introduce yourselves and your technology? Or are you here today with the intention of someday reaching some type of economical revenue-based arrangement with us?
I would say we're here today to do both.
So you wouldn't be doing this, you wouldn't, you would not construct one of these facilities within our mineral estate without some agreement or royalty arrangement or partnership arrangement, permit, permission? Without, from us.
That's exactly right, yeah, and the only thing I'd add to that is if we did have a ask, is that as you've been very kind to listen with, with open ears here is, how can we continue these conversations? How can we continue to get the answers? Max, I wanted to get back to you, clarify one question, because even though 28, 29 sounds far away, as the reason that we're doing this now is so soon after announcing the third or fourth, the second and third facility, is that we need to start now, right? We, we need to do right by this council, we need to make sure that we are able to line up our permits, our power, et cetera. There's a long lead time on that. But the path to getting a commitment and consensus and collaboration here, I think, is, is the most pressing and urgent matter in front of us so far.
If, would this be, the, the classics well that you would require for this sequestration, could it be the same well that another pipeline bringing in CO2 could utilize? Could they be, or would it be compatible?
Absolutely, yes, we, you know, we produce basically a pure stream of, of CO2, it would be pipelines back then, would.
We decided we wanted to get a classics well ourselves. Maybe we're doing EOR operations in one of our big fields, like what Capture Point's done in the, the South Riverine. I think it's the South Riverine, it could be the North Riverine, the North Riverine. But we have a classics well somewhere else in the county. I guess, with these plants, well, from the looks of it, it doesn't look like they're modular. It's not like, the plant needs to be relatively close to the source.
So I.
No, the, the disposal, uh, the, needs to be close to a classics well.
Ideally, yes.
Okay, so I have to.
Yes, and thank you very much. The other concern I have is exactly that, when we articulate to the other end that I'm talking about, the Osage Nation is not going to waive its sovereignty. The state of Oklahoma, if they'll come to us and ask us for the leasing and permitting and we allow that to be the monitor of these said wells or locations, that's what we'll be looking for. But if they don't want to, then that promise is not going to be put at risk here. And that's, that's on behalf of the council. But any other questions? Thank you all so much. I, I could see one person saying something, you better get it in.
Yeah, yeah.
One, one final ask, which is, and maybe not an ask necessarily, actually just an invitation, which is. which is, we do have an operational facility in California, and I think these questions are fantastic, but the best way to understand what it is we're trying to do is to come see it. And so, this is an open invitation to, to any and all of you to, to come visit. We'd love to give you a tour. We'd love to show you how this works. We'd love to actually demonstrate it for you, because I think really is, there, there is no, uh, no better way to do it than just to see it with your own eyes. So, that's an open invitation.
We appreciate that.
And we might take you up.
Absolutely.
And thank you very much. Any other issues that the council would have, just send it to us. The other side of the coin is that there is some concern about what does this bring environmentally, but also that we're having CO2 put to ground now. And I know the DOE is going to spend a lot of money. And I do want to see what happens. So, is that any questions you read back? I hate to ask you this, ladies and gentlemen. With that, we're going to move on.
Thank you guys.
Please enjoy yourself. You don't know how much I want to thank you. We're a lot younger than that, Ben. I'm a, I'm really a child in that bureau, so, thank you all.
Thank you.
And it was a true blessing, and hey, I want to, it's an honor to have your folks here as you speak about it.
We got one.
Council, would you like to move on now? Councilman Redcorn is the next one.
Thank you, Chairman. This won't take long. Thank you, Chairman. Communicated with a up-and-coming company that's looking at lithium production, and this seems like a pretty simple shot to do an assessment to see if we have that potential label reach. And if we did the analysis, that they would look at that and tell us if, you know, kind of where we are. So, the plan is, and I talked to Bill and our geologist, he's, we're going to identify hand-eye six locations, get a, uh, leader sample of our saltwater grinds, and we're going to, he and I are going to work together to get those selected. And then I contacted Accurate Lab, they're a really good lab in Stewart, did a lot of work with them. So, basically, they gave us a quote here, it's in front of you, it's $440 per sample. So, you take that times six, and, uh, that equals two, $2,640. So, that's my pitch to the Mineral Council, is we work and get six locations and kind of see where we are with the potential for lithium extraction. So, that's going to be, if I, if anybody has any questions on that.
I just have one comment. It works perfect, and we just spoke about on the DOE application desultation. We have to have these numbers on it. I'm ready to go for a vote. Council?
Thank you, Chairman. Is this associated with the, uh, the email, the subject DLE pilot?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, the, yeah, that's it.
Yes. What, what, what is there involved? They are a, they are, they have this innovative technology, and it's a separations technology. And they're patented in some of the, I believe it was either the Chemical and Engineering News. I'm a part of, uh, ACE, American Indian, American Institute of Chemical Engineers, and the Chemistry and Engineering Network through the ACS for Petroleum, and that's what I'm a member of. So, I get these, uh, bulletins that are sent. Well, I found this company that has a novel technology that can dig deeper into the concentration and pull it out. Talked about it the last several years on lithium, and one of our best consultants, Shane Mattson, been in communication with him. He, at that time, he just thought concentrations were too low. Now, the technology's really improved. These guys go look at the analysis and say, "Yeah, you guys got a potential here, or no, you don't." But also think, I mean, if this one doesn't work, we got those lab results in our hands.
Okay, so, if I may, uh, is this technology only to extract lithium or other rare?
Other, other metals.
Other metal? And evolve, wouldn't be interested in maybe picking up the, the cost and?
Yeah, it would be, uh, we, you know, if there's potential there, I'm sure that'd be on our knocking on the door. We're in Canada right now.
So, you'd like to independently get our water tested, see what we've got in it, and not, and not be, uh, obligated to, to just one company?
Yeah.
You're, you're introducing us to one company to do, but you're suggesting or requesting that we get our water analyzed in six different samples?
Right.
So that we'll have it, and we're not obligated to anyone?
Right.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Tolly, seems like I've seen something on TV or, like, maybe even History Channel about this lithium stuff. Isn't that, there's something like involved with the salt and sea out in California with this?
Well, the, the, and I could do a little research on lithium, but the main locations are in China and, uh, South America.
Okay.
And they have.
I thought, I've seen something where, uh, salt, you know, our salt and seas got some sort of lithium.
They're, they're looking strongly a lot of places, and these guys are doing it in oil and gas fields up there in Canada.
Gotcha.
So, uh, we are in a, I don't mean to rattle on, but we are in a worldwide shortage of lithium. So, they're really, because of the, they're.
So, they're looking for it.
EV cars and all the technology and electronics. We're about, about 40% lithium worldwide, so they're really pushing, and these companies are responding. So, I think this is a cheap and dirty way to say, "Hey, man, does this work or not?" And then also, we'll have.
Do some with our saltwater, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Couple of months ago, met with, had some phone conversations with some gentlemen out of Tulsa. They were instrumental in helping to try about west, I believe it was in the Colorado River Basin. There was a big lake, Lake Powell, one of those big lakes out there. Had larger causes of lithium, and the bottom, they helped that tribe retain the rights to that. Then, I don't think they have the total ownership of the waters, the land base, and throughout the lithium and bottom located. They helped those guys negotiate that. So, this information, we might go and visit some of those guys at some point, too, that are going to be helped.
District Councilperson, you could, Councilman, you could grab those results and hand them straight to them, and they, do their own analysis, uh, each and everybody.
Second Chair. Yeah, thank you, Tolly, for your presentation. I think it's very important, there's a lot of minerals down there, you know. And I'm with the Chairman, we're here to get on.
Okay. Sir, would you like to make a?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we, uh, allow our staff to grab six samples, take it to Accurate Lab, the quote's in front of you.
Second.
I have a second, our motion on the floor, my Councilman Redcorn, second, my Councilman Chafford. Without discussion, let's call for the question.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Chafford?
Yes.
Chairman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Bit Horse?
Yes.
Councilman Chisholm?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Council, let's push one more item through.
I think I should, right? Yeah.
The next up on my agenda, my agenda is the 7-E, Warrior Methane Abatement DOE Grant. Mr. Robert Knapp, I see, Mr. Scott DeShaw.
I apologize to everyone about switching from Robert, but he's up in Colorado.
Taking care of our business.
He can't do it. I'm still the largest show on the warrior, so I'm.
Hey, I didn't say ask you that.
So.
Thank you, sir.
It's been really interesting, the last two different conversations. And now we're going back to fundamentals. Osage County still a bunch of little wells, as evidenced by the numbers that the Super Tech gave us this morning. What we're talking about today, and I want to introduce you guys to, is what we've been working on for two years. It's a little pumping thing that we've done up and down on the Red Eagle lease. We've done this, we've got thirty wells out there now that we've put together. Several of the council members have been out to compete at what we've done. We're, we're doing this in conjunction with their technologies, who I'm going to introduce you to, and Kelsey University. They've also got PhD representatives here today to talk about exactly what we're dealing with. And there is grant money available, fairly shortly, for exactly the program that we, we have. So, we believe we've, we've put together six to seven hundred wells in the county, many of them producing, many of them not, that we can add, the opportunity to add more production. So, we might be able to throw in another four, five, six hundred barrels a day of production using these little pumps that these guys are, are going to tell you about. And what all we're looking for from the council, we just want to show you guys what the deal is and just, just have a, a little letter of support, which we'll also show you. No commitments, no funds, no nothing. It's all going to be between us and the DOE in the future. But, but the program has to be submitted by the 26th of August. So, we've got a little bit of timing, which is why we very much appreciate getting us in here and sit down.
Let's get started.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Don Aldrich, I'm the Sales and Marketing Director for Air Lift Technology. A little bit of my background, four, three years in the industry, but I'm a member of the Navy, just one day, drop out and go. I'm now a resident of Osage County, they're just outside, in Sky Creek, so. Want to thank you for your time today. With me is Dr. Eduardo Paredes.
Very good.
Very good, Steve. So, I'll make him give a short introduction of himself, as well as Mr. Gary Simis, the owner and inventor of Air Lift Technology.
Hello, Doctor. What do you want? My name is Eduardo Paredes, professor at University of Tulsa. To my ear, but this is, uh, quite a lot. Has been working with them on the utilization of the system that they developed here in the same chair.
Very good.
Thank you for letting us be here today, and Phil, it's in such a short notice. I'm Gary Simis, the owner of Air Lift Technology. Currently, Air Lift Technology, as well as my personal residence, are located in Owata.
Go on, man. Thank you. Uh, there's some other people that have missed it here, but they weren't able to make it today, so I'll try to move quickly and introduce them. You may be aware of this, it's under the Inflation Reduction Act. It's a methane emission reduction program for oil and gas monitoring and mitigation. As Scott mentioned, we have paired a quick trigger on this. So, we have to submit our application by August 26th, and it's hoped to be awarded by the, by December of this year. There's several parts of the grant, some are larger than others, and we felt that one particular one really fit our needs and what we're doing, because it's, it's capitalized on the precedent we have here in Osage Basin, and that's going to be 1C. We, we looked at 1A in Alltander, which was a large one, drew our attention, $300 million, but we feel that, that 1C just fits right in there, and, and you can see, reducing methane emission, marginal convention wells, oil and gas assets on truck lanes. But that's what we're going to accomplish in here. They anticipate, excuse me, if there's any questions, interrupt, I'll try to move through, because I know it's been a, a long meeting, but they anticipate awarding one of the grants in each area. So, uh, we just feel that, that Oklahoma, Northeast Oklahoma, primarily, Osage County is the place that, that should receive this $50 million. It would be one person to receive those funds, a single point of, of contact that would then have to put together a consortium to make sure that we chose the correct wells to deploy the technology. Will it be lawyers? Will it be under?
Air Lift Technology. Yes.
So, uh, I mentioned, there was kind of a couple of things in 1A that just didn't stand out for us because of those non-federal grants. We don't know exactly what the government, you know, considers non-federal by the way, whereas the other ones more succeed. I've just highlighted a couple of the key points that really fits this. One of the ones that I'll draw your attention to is down here in the bottom, this commercially available, off-the-sale methane emission, excuse me, mitigation technologies. They have a set of readiness levels in the grant, ranging from one to nine. Nine says it's been field proven, and it, it's out there working. There, no further research or development needs to be done to deploy this technology to that. So, what you'll see is the analogies we have, that right now, this is why Air Lift Technology, it is still proven. We're currently in Osage County. These particular wells we're looking at here are just east of, excuse me, just west of Davine Hill, south of Davine. They eliminate all methane emissions that the well get. They transport previously vintage methane market. It's commercially available, off the shelf. As I mentioned, it meets that highest readiness level. Been in operation for two years. There's over thirty systems retrofitted in a Osage County currently. You can see here, this is the Red Eagle lease, so these particular ones are. These two, you'll see, one of them is where they have an electrical grid, and it's an electrical compressor, just using it. It's a closed-loop system that uses the gas to operate the system. And then after it's used, that gas, it places it into the cell lines. So, there's zero methane emission. The second one also uses that gas, a closed-loop system, but since it's off-grid, it uses a motor to run it. Now, you do have some emissions from that motor, but they're not as high levels than it is considered as far as free cost of gas warming effect. Further research will be down the road on converters, catalytic type converters for those methane emissions. So, what are the benefits to the Osage Nation if we were to receive this grant? It extends the life of producing assets. Let's not focus in on, on, uh, plug and abandon. It, it provides a capital cost for retrofitting, so negatively renewed is completely negated. It also expands the number of economic wells, not only wells that are currently in production, but we hope to be able to place some high-class assets back in production. You'll notice how much more aesthetically appealing it is at the well site. So, it's, it's a much fuller footprint, uh, at the well site. And then it provides jobs for Osage. So, a big part of this, the grant will continue over forty-four months. And a huge part of it is the sustaining of, well, yes, upfront is the capital cost, but then how do we deploy these wells? How do we, uh, monitor the emissions? And what it will do is, how do we sustain the producing access? Assets will have local manufacturer of the equipment. So, some of that, that's currently at all manufactured here in the States, but we'd like to, to see what components would make sense within the Osage Nation. It exposes people to STEM warning, and it would also expose them, we currently have a four-year project with the University of Tulsa, with their conducting research program, to enhance the fluid dynamics, be able to take it to greater depths, and move more fluids in the way. So, huge benefit, we believe, to the nation. Only have one question, Scott, that's going to encompass also the vertical and horizontal drilling opportunities. Does this play into that anywhere?
It really doesn't.
Just on the vertical?
No, because we're really dealing with your stripper wells, things that are twenty-three, forty barrels of total fluid in there.
Yes, sir.
Making one, two, three, four barrels, you, you're really thinking long-term. It's trying to save those wells from being plucked.
Let's do that, thank you. So, a little bit of, just to, to give you a compelling argument for the technology, this is actually a well on Rodland here in Osage County. You can see this is taken with an optical gas imaging camera. You can see the methane venting. Now, a couple of places it, it occurs, a lot of find operators, just to make sure to optimize flow, they're venting methane from the annulus. Second, you, you can see the traditional rodware, just going up and down through that stripper head, eventually wears it. So, you have a high maintenance program on these, these wells. As, what you'll see, why the government is focused on methane so much, they consider it eighty times more warming than CO2, although it has a shorter life than CO2. What this shows, the, the higher the temperature, the whiter the, uh, the image. And then if we'll move on to a, uh, Air Lift system, you'll be able to see what that looks like, yes.
No, go right ahead.
Sorry. So, uh, what you're going to see after this is just a, a draft of a letter of support that we believe will give us good credibility that the beneficiaries of being able to deploy the grant in Osage Nation fully support this. So, you're seeing some Air Lift systems here, they're not. So you're seeing some air lift systems here, you're not seeing the methane emissions coming out of these locations. As I mentioned, everything is a closed loop system. And what's important is this methodology. If any of you are aware of Lee Healing and Associates, one of the most renowned third-party engineering firm, they have completely acknowledged and approved the methodology, verified methodology of capture and all this. And you can see how there's no emissions coming out of that wellhead and or around that compressor system.
How's your production doing?
So we have seen, and Scott can attest to this, that we've seen anywhere from a fifteen to a thirty percent reduc-, excuse me, increase in production, and not only.
Yeah, bad words.
I was so focused on production in there. So increase in production on the oil and gas, and placing that, another kind of a bonus, if you will, is with this compressor, we get quite a bit of condensate knockout. So it can add to about fifty gallons sometime of additional condensate.
We're going from barrels to gallons. And exactly your question, it's right on the head, because this machine actually measures gallons. When there's not enough gallons to move up the hole, it just keeps filling that little thing up. So we've really experienced about a quarter, twenty-five percent increase across the board in the thirty wells.
Comes as a strike lighting it down.
Which is not, that's part of what saves it, plus the LOE expenses are all going into the five hundred wells we're trying to do, and maybe ten thousand, I don't know where we're going to be as a county. But that's why we're bringing this to you guys, to show you what we have in mind, and maybe the grant would be there. It could be for the job.
Scott, thank you, Chairman. What does a setup like this cost?
So we currently, the entire system is about fifty thousand dollars.
Six?
Fifty.
Oh, fifty?
Yes, sir. Now, part of the grant, what we recognize is, due to some economy of scale, we can get that cost down and put more of the grant money towards sustaining jobs and expanding to the number of ways.
Is it grant for study, or is it grant for actually implementing?
It is for, it is deploying technology, there's no study.
Okay. What is the minimum volume of gas to justify the fifty thousand dollar expenditure?
So we have to look at the various, the different ones, of course. The ones you just want to, is if it's the other criteria of the system, and then has higher emissions that you can measure, and then, of course, you can start moving down, you would have emissions, and like, but there's.
If you have a well, are these to be put on, would you be just putting on these, these on wells that would have high enough volume of gas to be commercial? In other words, you wouldn't put this on a well that just has seven MCF a day?
Three to four MCF, pause.
How much?
Three to four MCF is what we anticipate, from most wells in the county making. We think it's going to be somewhere around seven to eight tenths of a barrel of oil.
Eight tenths?
Eight tenths of a barrel. We've got sixteen thousand wells making ten thousand barrels right now, which is about point six one per well. So what this is designed for is around six to seven tenths of a barrel, together with three to four MCF of gas, with the capability, with the capability of going up to as much as twenty MCF of gas, and we've got one well that makes seven barrels of oil.
Okay, so I think you recognize, or you acknowledge the superintendent's report, I think I heard you say. So today's numbers, the daily production divided by the amount of oil wells we had was point eight barrels per well. That is an average across the whole county. But so you're, if you had the scenario you're talking about, eight tenths of a barrel of oil and three to four MCF of gas, and you're paying fifty thousand dollars to install and acquire this, what is the ROI on that investment?
The grant, the grant is going to take care of the number, it's not only the fifty thousand.
Well, I'm just, okay, I'm thinking, not in terms of the grant, and I know that's why you're here, but I'm just thinking in terms of, is this economical without the grant? Would an operator with one, eight tenths of a barrel of oil and three or four MCF a day, would it be economical for them to spend fifty thousand dollars to put that on there? How long would it pay out?
Probably not without testing in advance, because if you're going to pay the fifty thousand that you were going to put out, and it was on an old well, made a barrel a day or less, then the future value just isn't going to, isn't going to present value.
Okay, so the only way that this would be economical is with federal grant?
Can I, can I add something there?
Yes.
Yeah, well, when you see the new APA regulation of methane, I know the same point, you know, how we're going to cover this. The advantage of this one is going to be the fund that you don't have to pay, because you are not emitting methane to the point.
Well, we could not produce our oil if we didn't vent our gas. So we may be seeking exclusions from some of these regulations that you referenced. Because every one of our wells looked like the one you just talked about. I mean, you know that. And you also know, and Scott for sure knows, that three or four MCF a day is not a big enough volume to collect and put in a pipeline. You'd have to compress it like with your equipment, to be able to plug the line without holding back pressure on your backside. And which, if you did, you'd never make an ounce of fluid.
This system solves that problem. There's zero pressure at the wellhead, or I mean, at the hopper.
I understand, I understand. The volumes we're talking about, this equipment is not economical for the, for the average producer out there, unless the federal government actually purchases.
So there are solutions, you know, fifty thousand along the top side, there are solutions that are more economical. And certainly, it's not a bad idea, it's not for every well, that's why we would be pulling subset of the wells in the, in the nation to make sure that it fits the proper.
Is this grant specifically for federal lands?
It's for tribal lands.
Tribal lands, yes. Okay, and can anybody, like yourselves, apply for the grant and be awarded the grant without being a tribal member or tribal entity?
As far as I know, yes, sir. Now, what they're really going to be stressing is off-the-shelf commercially available technology.
Right.
That's very specific language.
And you have that?
Yes, sir.
And so there is no requirement? You're requesting a letter of support?
Yes, sir.
And that it's not required?
That is correct.
It is not required? You could do this on your own, apply for it, but you just thought?
We felt that it would be more compelling in our story, that we had to coordinate the nation, that would be the beneficiary.
Is this, are y'all privately funded, private company?
Yes, sir.
Or are you a public?
I'm going to go with Councilman Redcorn first, and then Councilman.
Have a stock option?
So one of the things that is also important is, this is patented technology, that you have around it.
Here, it's patented.
It is, yes, and you guys.
And you want to.
We're applying this international, but it's.
Yeah, so this methane capture is associated with any tax credits from the, any of the federal programs for capturing that?
There's no specific wording in credit about credits in the grant that we've seen. But, you know, that's a possibility down the road. Forty-five Qs, right?
What we're looking at down the.
Forty-five Qs.
Another thing, it's a tax incentive in progress.
It doesn't specify methane in the tax law, it specifies CO2.
Right.
So forty-five Qs right now are not available for these credits, but they're very well made. And what we're getting from senators and some of the people we're talking, the language will get included in the bill.
Isn't there one of forty-five B? There's another forty-five for something else besides CO2.
We said it to the natives.
Yeah, I forgot what it was. But would there be any way for us to share those tax credits?
We suggested, when we first chatted about this, that the royalties could be a part of that credit, because you are entitled to the eighty-five, or the forty-five Q as the royalty.
No, I think, I think you have to actually be the entity that actually had the. Has the extent, the capital investment, gets the tax credit. I don't think the royalty will give them forty-five Q. Only those people who actually pay.
We've been down this road, Chairman, on this discussion before.
Yes, sir.
And then the royalties is part of the piece of that, capture that, that way our shareholders sit around here and like pay taxes on forty-five Q. So this, this company is very aware of that. I just want to make sure that, yeah, we understand that that was presented before in different types of setups.
Something else about. And how many of you geners will this grant be able to?
We're going to go with at least five hundred geners.
Yes, sir. And would we have any say over which wells? Were they all going to be on Warrior's well for four?
I think they definitely would have a proper authority to make sure there's properly distributed. Yes, sir.
I've got to stop, I've got to go to Councilman and ask him, does he have any other comments? And it goes, and then I'm going to come back to you guys. Second Chairman, the first one, and this, how many did you say you got up there now, sir?
We've got thirty that we've installed, there's about twenty four running right now.
Okay, and when we talked last year, Mr. Reddick and I went out and looked at, and there was three or four.
Yeah, we were looking at that, the Reddy Lease.
The Reddy Lease.
That's where we went.
Thank you for expanding your operations.
And everything up on those pictures was pictures of all that stuff that you guys saw.
Okay, I think we got a misnomer, you're calling it air lift.
Air Lift Technology.
We, I saw you guys switch over from air to.
It's a gas.
We ran it all on methane.
All on methane, coming from your lease?
Yes, sir.
Correct, so the methane from the well is what powers the system. We compress the methane, that's what displaces the fluid. All of the methane that were used to displace the fluid gets recirculated indefinitely and used over and over.
Excellent, so I think.
And keeps the pressure at zero at the bottom of the well, which is critical to you and me.
Keep your flow going at its optimum. That's how you demonstrated to Mr. Reddick and I last year. And we actually had you guys come in and hear and present. So we're happy, I'm happy, but the thing I would pose to the Chairman is that your team write up a draft, what this letter should look like.
Looking at it right now.
Can I finish?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
He can finish.
So give us a letter, what you guys wanted to say, and send it to Lacy and her Chairman, and we got to look at, there's things we got to consider as a council, and we can bump the table with us on next meeting. That's Michael Pope.
Councilman.
I have a question, you're talking about methane, the emissions capturing it, and you, on one of your prior slides, you said, how to get it to market?
Yes.
That's the majority of the pipelines that we have.
Okay.
Our, the gathering system that we've been putting together, I'm trying, I've kept, we got, that's why we got King and Morgan, that was four hundred and ninety-five miles, they were going to shut down. And we're actually working with CBR for some of the tank batteries that they've got, the no-gas part. We're preparing to gather all these little gases that the compressors will be able to push. One of the problems that you got, you've got to keep it fairly low in pressure, and at the wellhead, you've got to keep it at one or two miles.
Okay, so that's what we're talking about with royalty?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's also a place where we can measure what royalties do, if there's, if you guys are entitled to the forty-five Qs, which I think you are, I truly do, now maybe I'm wrong, I don't know.
So the grant also gives you money to expand on infrastructure, so it could be stepping out access to the sales line.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Is it possible to get some of our Osages young people involved in this process?
That's what we're, we're.
Okay, I can only ask a question.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to have some of our young people get involved somehow.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Second Chair, Councilman involved. Scott, when we went out there, we went out there, I think it was last year, yes. You invited us out, I appreciate that. And this, can you explain a little bit how the methane, the natural gas is used to operate the pump? And I think that's very economical for the producer, you know, to, he don't have to do anything, that natural gas is important. Can you explain some of that, how that works?
So there's a float switch inside the pump, and the pump chamber, if this was our pump, there's a float switch in here, and in two of his pump chambers completely full, that float switch is sitting down. Once the chamber's full, the float switch will lift up, it'll trigger the air in pin, in this case, the gas bin. The gas will then push the fluid down to the bottom of the pump, where it's got a pickup tube that comes out, so it's forcing it down, out the check valve, and up. So unless that chamber's completely full, that pump is in standby mode and using no energy whatsoever. Once the chamber's empty, the float switch drops, disengages the air in pin, then it opens the exhaust port, which now allows us to take all the gas that we used for pushing the fluid up, recirculate it back into the compressor.
Back up the use.
Yes, we're actually bringing the gas back up to the surface through a separate line, and then tying it into the annules, like Scott said, so we try to maintain about a half a pound of pressure on the annulus.
It's kind of a recycling process in a way.
It is, correct.
Thank you, okay.
Council, thank you.
Any other questions?
With that, we have, Lacy, did we get sent the draft letter?
Yes, well, we're working on it.
We're working on it, let us get a chance to review it, and we'll take it up and take care of it next meeting.
Yes, sir.
We'll put it on the agenda to have it.
We were hoping for today, because that's what we've been working on, can follow up, we've got two years.
I wasn't done talking, Scott. Oh, my God.
Who bombed it today, guys?
No, don't take him on an interview, that's all I got to say. But he did show us what they need to see, and that's production, I appreciate that. With that.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Let us get a few of that real quick, is, we'll be getting back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
And I've already had Council, uh, listen, we did twenty-four.
I know, I.
Thank you. So nice to see you. I'm going to come back over to another project with you, but I had a little issue in my head, so I'll be over.
I'm over.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Uh, Lacy is our lunch after. We're going to take a short break, come back right after lunch, about thirty minutes.
Make a, make a motion, go ahead and say.
Yeah, I can do that.
I need to make a motion.
Oh, I'll do it, I'll do it.
Go in executive, so maybe I need a second.
Second.
Second, I have a motion for, for Councilman Tishawala, second by Councilwoman Irwin, go into executive session. Please call for a question.
Second Chair, Red Eagle.
Yes.
Councilman Rebar.
Yes.
Councilman Chakravarti.
Yes.
Chairman Waller.
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse.
Yes.
Councilman Tishawala.
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin.
Yes.
Councilman Redcor.
Yes.